Okay, it is four thirty-four and we're, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Today's date is Monday, November twenty-eighth, and again, it is four thirty-four. So, the first item is, establish quorum, Ms. Anna?
Yes, Mayor, we got Mayor Norrie Garza.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum, Councilman Arbel Flores is not with us at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Yes, if I can have everyone please stand for the invocation pledge allegiance. Heavenly Father, let us thank you for your unfailing love and your wonderful deeds for mankind. You satisfy the thirsty and fill the hungry with good things. Remind us that we lack nothing as your beloved children. Fill our hearts with gratitude. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
The next item, were there any conflicts of interest that were signed?
No, we will file.
No, okay, the next item is presentations, and first up is Brenda Nandikas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, this Friday, we are prepping for a ribbon cutting with WellMed, and it's happening at eleven a.m. So, we do invite our council and friends to come and join us if you can. This Friday evening, from five p.m. to eight p.m., we are hosting our winter market. So, just a reminder, Discover Mission hosts two markets annually, and one is a spring market and the other one is a winter. It's job-friendly, so we do invite all of our community to come and join us, walk around, have some fun, there will be live music, and we still have space for vendors, so anybody interested in selling their, their goods, we went ahead and advertised it as, come and check off your, your Christmas list. The date for the Buenas tardes legislative update is scheduled for January nineteenth, it falls on a Thursday, so more details will be coming to that, we will be sending out the invitation at the end of this month. And the next Thursday, just a reminder, we do have our annual Health and Wellness Fair scheduled for December eighth and ninth. We are still taking vendors, their deadline to RSVP for a booth at the health fair is gonna be this Friday, and we're also still taking appointments, we will be taking appointments for the blood work until the health fair. So, anybody interested, to get an appointment for the blood work, we only need a home address, that's all you need, so it can be, it's open for anybody. And the rest of the health fair is open for anybody, so the only appointments we need is just for blood, blood work. Later that day on Thursday, at five p.m., we do have a ribbon cutting for the Mission Historical Museum, and then on Friday at ten a.m., we do have a groundbreaking for a new school, Briante Academy, and that's what we have this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item are the departmental reports, are there any questions? These were in our packets.
I'm going to set the reports as presented.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second to approve the departmental reports as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, four zero. The next item is citizens' participation, Anna?
Yes, ma'am, I've had two that have signed up, the first one is Ms. Kathy Casillas.
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Kathy Casillas, and I really thank you for this time that I'm able to speak. I like to take every opportunity I can to speak forth, good words, words that lift up, words that encourage, and I want to encourage you all tonight. Matthew five fourteen says, "You are the light of the world; a city that is set on a hill cannot be hidden." Verse sixteen says, "Let your light so shine before men, that they may see your good works and glorify your Father in heaven." Luke eleven two, "Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done, on earth as it is in heaven." I believe God wants his government here, on this earth. We have kind of pushed him out of government, and I think that's a big mistake. Righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. By the blessing of the upright the city is exalted, but it's overthrown by the mouth of the wicked. Proverbs sixteen twelve says, "It's an abomination to kings to commit wickedness, for the throne is established by righteousness." Proverbs twenty twenty-eight, "Mercy and truth preserve the king, and his throne is held up by mercy." Yours is not an easy job. You know, I got a little confession to make, many years ago, we were supposed to meet with Mayor Beto, and he didn't show up, and I was kind of complaining inside, and I says, "Lord, this is not right, it's not good." And he told me, he says, "Their job is not easy. Their job is hard, they have things coming against them that you don't know about, that you don't understand." And so, I want you to know that I pray for you, I pray for our city, because we need God, we need him desperately, personally, and as a city, as a state, as a nation, and as the world. May God bless you, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, now we have Mr. Jesús Mendoza, who's on, online.
I'll do.
Mr. Mendoza, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, ma'am, yes, can you please tell me when to start?
You can start.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jesús Mendoza, and this is a comment about the root cause of police officers' suicide. I have been homebound for more than ten years with a life threatening electro-sensitivity EHS, which was caused and aggravated by the same wireless micro irradiation devices used by police officers. My EHS has been recognized as physical medical condition and as a disability. The symptoms of EHS are similar to the symptoms on most illnesses, including serious catastrophic and irreversible illnesses. It is estimated that without knowing it, millions are suffering from EHS. The same wireless micro irradiation reaching children, reaching police officers at work has caused EHS, another catastrophic and irreversible harm and disabilities to children, teachers, doctors, attorneys, police officers, firefighters, and even to a director of the World Health Organization, please see we are the evidence that or. Exposure to lower, to power levels of radiation above the federal safety limits causes harm even to healthy and strong adults. The cell phones and other wireless devices used by police officers, and mid-power levels of radiation above the federal safety limits. Out of fifty-five police officers that routinely place wireless devices on their laps, fifty-three suffered testicular cancer and some had to be castrated. Police officers are exposed at work to more than two-hundred-and-fifty units of radiation, and exposure to less than a hundred-and-fifty can cause electro-sensitivity in brain, eye, blood, nerve, heart, and DNA damage, even to the children of police officers. Exposure to less than ten-thousand units of micro irradiation breaks the blood-brain barrier, allowing toxins on the bloodstream, including painkillers, vaccines, and other medications to injure and damage the brain, which can cause anxiety, depression, aggressiveness, and impairment of judgment during emergencies, might confusion in ability to focus on brain fog and depression. Chronic exposure to radiation increases by more than a hundred-and-fifty percent the risk of suicide, and increases by more than five-hundred percent the risk of cancer. Okay, most, most officers, I mean, officers with suicidal tendency keep them to themselves for fear of losing their gun, their job, and even their licenses. To make things worse, nobody's protecting our police officers from this harm caused by exposure to radiation. There are mitigating methods that can be used to protect them, and that includes using the same technologies that are being used by the Secret Service and by the Border Patrol, and measuring officers' exposure to radiation at work and home, and periodic medical examinations by doctors with expertise in environmental medicine. A copy of this comment is going to be provided to the mayor, so, so a copy can be given to every police officer on the city mission, including the firefighters, and it includes the evidence and also the mitigating measures to protect them. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Anybody else?
No.
No, okay. We're gonna move on to public hearings, and the first item is a rezoning request for one-point-nine-nine acre tract out of BL Miller's re-subdivision lots sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmember, and City Manager. Item number four is a rezoning for a one-point-nine-nine acre tract of land, being a part or portion of Lot D, BL Miller's re-subdivision of lots sixteen through twenty, Block Four, Mission Grove Estates. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Interim to C-three General Business. The applicant is Gilberto Maldonado. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located a thousand sixty-six feet west of Inspiration Road along the north side of West Griffin Parkway. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the north and west to the east, General Business. The future land use map shows this area as general commercial. Since this property is along a major thoroughfare and is consistent with the existing land use, the staff is receptive to the request. PNZ and staff recommended approval, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition, please come forward. Is there anyone online? Are there any questions for staff?
May I move to approve?
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request from AOI to C-three General Business with an ordinance number fifty-two fifty-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, four zero. Thank you, next item?
Item number five is a conditional use permit for the complimentary offering of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption for a social and or cultural event. This is for the Mission Historical Museum twentieth anniversary, to be held December eighth at nine-hundred Dorothy Avenue. This would be lots one through seven, Block one-sixty-one, Mission Original Townsite. The property is currently Zoned C-three, General Business, and the applicant is the Mission Historical Museum. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Dorothy Avenue and Business Highway eighty-three. The Mission Historical Museum is a five-oh-one C-three nonprofit organization, which first opened its doors in two thousand and two and serves the community of Mission and visitors to the area. In celebration of their twentieth anniversary, they're hosting a private event on December eighth. Muse and galleries will be open for guests to view and would like to offer alcohol to their guests. The alcohol and food consumption will only be allowed in the courtyard area, the alcohol would not be sold to guests, and will be, it will consist of wine and brews. A similar CUP was last approved on March nine, two thousand and twenty, for a period of four years for the Upper Valley Art League. The event is scheduled to be from five to seven-thirty p.m. Staff, PNZ and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? No one being present, is there anyone online? Nope.
I'm going to approve, ma'am.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the offering of complimentary alcoholic beverages for the Mission Historical Museum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, four zero.
Mayor, next ordinance fifty-two fifty-five?
Yes, fifty-two fifty-five, I'm sorry.
Item number six is a conditional use permit for a regulated consumer finance lender office on property Zoned C-two Neighborhood Commercial. This is at eighteen-twenty-one North Sherry Road, Suite Two, this would be Lot One, Bandwidth Business Center. The applicant is Landmark Financial Services, LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located along the west side of Sherry Road between Village Drive and Mulberry Street. The applicant leased a one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-eight square foot suite for a regulated consumer finance lender office. Access to the site is via thirty-foot access drive off of Sherry. The property is currently Zoned Neighborhood Commercial. Section one-point-four-three-D of the zoning code states that business establishments which perform services on the premises such as banks, loan companies, real estate offices require a conditional use permit. The hours of operation are Monday to Friday from eight-thirty to five-thirty. They're proposing to have four, as staff parking will be held in common. There will be forty-six existing parking spaces that will be shared with other businesses. PNZ and staff recommended approval, subject to one-year reevaluation to assess the operation, they must comply with all city codes and acquire a business license prior to business occupancy. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request?
My name is David Ramos, and I'm here in behalf of Landmark.
Okay.
To offer any additional information or answer any questions that y'all might have.
Okay.
In reference to this, or in reference to our request.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask to see if there's any other public input, and then we have, if we have any questions, we'll ask you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? There being none, is there anyone online that would like to speak? Nope, nope, okay. Are there any questions for the applicant or staff?
I'm going to approve, I just wanna know which one is, what's the closest loan company to this particular one? So, are we making an exception on this one?
They would qualify for the requirement, but there's nothing.
The, the closest one is on four ninety-five between Glasscock and Sherry, which is, exceeds the fifteen-hundred minimum requirement feet. The closest institution would be the bank, they're in the corner of Sherry and four ninety-five, and it exceeds the fifteen-hundred square feet as well. There's no other loan within the fifteen-hundred on Sherry Road.
But they're not, it's not a, a business like the ones on Conway, that are like, oh, but we had already said prior to this that we were gonna do a cap at the twenty-eight that we had. I thought that we had already.
I think there's a city ordinance that it is within fifteen-hundred.
What we excluded were the banks, mortgage companies, and the title companies.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, so this one is now within the fifteen-hundred, so do they need to come to us for approval?
The, the reason they're coming is because under a C-two zone, they require a conditional use permit, that's the, the purpose of the.
Oh, okay.
That's the only reason, they're meeting the, the distance, it's just that under a C-two, they require a conditional use permit.
If it was a C-three, they wouldn't.
They wouldn't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, does somebody make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as requested, and that would be ordinance number fifty-two fifty-six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, four zero. Next item?
Next item is number seven, is a conditional use permit for a restaurant, the San Juan House, on property Zoned C-two Neighborhood Commercial. This is at eighteen-twenty-one North Sherry Road, Suite Seven, this would be out of Lot One, Bandwidth Business Center. The applicant is Tomas Aguirre. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed, this is exactly in the same place as the previous item. The days and hours of operation for this establishment is Monday to Friday from ten a.m. to six p.m., Saturday from twelve to six, and Sunday only for special deliveries. They're proposing three for their staff parking, there's a total of forty-six existing parking spaces that will be shared. PNZ and staff recommended approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation to assess the operation, they must comply with all city codes and acquire a business license prior to business occupancy. This is also, since it's a C-two zone, it requires them to go to a conditional use permit in order to be able to operate. This item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit for the restaurant located at eighteen-twenty-one North Sherry Road? There being none, is there anyone online? Nope, nope, okay. Are there any questions for staff?
May I move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the restaurant located at eighteen-twenty-one North Sherry Road with ordinance number fifty-two fifty-seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearing. The next item is consent agenda, that would be, item number eight is approval of minutes for the regular meeting November fourteenth and November twenty-first, acknowledgment receipt of minutes, plans zoning August tenth, September thirteenth, and twenty-eighth, zoning board of adjustments December fifteenth and March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, July twenty twenty-two, and August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Approval of request by State Representative Sette Muñoz for the lease agreement at one-twenty-one East Tom Landry. Authorization to award bid for odor control chemicals for the wastewater treatment plants. Number twelve is approval of resolution number eighteen-zero-two, a resolution approving the resolution, the resolution of Mission Economic Development Corporation authorizing the issuance of one or more series of revenue bonds and the loan of the proceeds thereof to Texoma Communications, LLC. Item number thirteen is an authorization to enter into memorandum, I'm sorry, mammogram, no, it is not a mammogram, it's a memorandum of understanding between Rio Grande Valley, Texas Anti-Gang Program, and the City of Mission Police Department, sorry again. And item number fourteen is authorization to purchase a payback server for sole, from a sole-source vendor. Item number fifteen would be resolution number eighteen-zero-three, or do we give them a number afterwards?
No, we can give.
Could do now, okay. Regarding a water line access agreement with Sherland Water Supply. Item number sixteen is authorization to submit a grant application to BGA for the Southwest Border Rule Law Enforcement Assistant Program. Item number seventeen is authorization to submit grant application to TDEM for the fiscal year twenty-two. Number eighteen is the authorization to submit grant application to TWDB for the fiscal year twenty-two for flood mitigation assistance grant program. Item number nineteen is approval, approval to rescind resolution eleven nineteen and approval of resolution number.
Eighteen-zero-four.
Eighteen-o-four.
Eighteen-o-four. Authorizing City of Mission to accept payment by credit card and to set a processing fee for credit card or electronic payments. And last is item number twenty, authorization to purchase assorted pool chemicals. Are there any of these items that need to be pulled?
May I like to move for approval?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to accept and approve the consent agenda as, as read, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries unanimously, four zero. The next item is item number twenty-one. And this is a preliminary plat approval.
Mayor, item number twenty-one is a preliminary plat approval for Malus Phase Two subdivision. This is a twenty-acre tract of land out of Lot Seventeen, Block Three, Texan Gardens subdivision. This is in our suburban ETJ. The developer is Julio Zerba and the engineer is South Texas Infrastructure Group. This subdivision is located at the intersection of Four Mile and Iowa Road. The developer is proposing twenty-one single-family residential lots. Water belongs to Agua Sud. Sewer will be treated by individual onsite sewage facilities consisting of a stand-designed dual-compartment septic tank and a drain field. They're proposing three hydrants to be used as filling stations. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNZ and staff recommend approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy, and meeting any comments from the county planning department. This item is now before you.
I move to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four-zero. Next item?
Item number twenty-two is a preliminary plat approval for Carisales subdivision number three. This is a twenty-four-point thirty-four acre tract of land being all of lots thirteen and fourteen, Block Five Texan Gardens subdivision. This is in our suburban ETJ. The developer is Carisales LLC and the engineer is Quintanilla Lee and Associates. The subdivision is located on the west side of Iowa Road, a thousand eighty feet south of Mile Five North Road. The developer is proposing thirty-six single-family residential lots. The water belongs to Agua Sud. Sewer will be treated by individual onsite sewage facility consisting of a stand-designed dual-septic tank. They're proposing three hydrants to be used as filling stations. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNZ and staff recommended approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy, and meeting any other comments from the county planning department office. This item is now before you.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve preliminary plat as presented. Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four-zero. Next item?
The next item is number twenty-three prelim, sorry, final plat approval for Eduardo subdivision number sixteen, Phase Two. This is a three-point nineteen-acre tract of land, more or less, out of the south five acres of the south ten acres of Lot Thirty-five dash four, West addition to Sherland. This is in our suburban ETJ. The developer is Ingrid Astri Isaguirre. The engineer is Isaguirre Engineering Group LLC. The subject site is located on the west side of Trosper Road, approximately half a mile north of Three Mile Road. The developer is proposing fourteen single-family residential lots. Water belongs to Agua Sud. An existing internal eight-inch sewer line system will provide sewer services to all the lots. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNZ and staff recommended approval, subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees and comply with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
I move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Eduardo subdivision number sixteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four-zero. Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Item number twenty-four, seeking authorization for the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement between the Mission Redevelopment Authority, Reinvestment Zone Number One, and the City of Mission related to Phase Two of Inspiration Military Parkway. This project is, or this agreement is related to Phase Two of Inspiration Military Parkway Project. The reimbursement agreement was approved by the TERS Board of Directors at our October twenty-fifth meeting in an amount not to exceed three million seven hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the request as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item?
Item number twenty-five, seeking authorization for the mayor to execute a first amendment to reimbursement agreement between Mission Redevelopment Authority, Reinvestment Zone Number One, and the City of Mission related to Inspiration Military Parkway Project. This first amendment to the original reimbursement agreement was approved by the board, by the MRA TERS Board at our Board Directors Meeting of October twenty-fifth in an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
There's a motion and a second to approve the request as, for change order number two as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Item number twenty-six, authorization to approve change order number two for the construction of the Esperanza Drainage Improvements Project as part of the twenty-twenty-one Bond Drainage Project for the City of Mission. Due to revision of the project plans, a decision was made to keep existing access road and still be able to accommodate for the detention pond. Additionally, two concrete piles were added to support the existing sanitary sewer line that crosses the pond. Because of these revisions and additions, the amount of the project increased by thirty-four thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. Staff is recommending change order for the total amount to the project of five million seven hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. City manager recommends approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the change order for Esperanza Drainage Improvements, and that would be change order number two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is unfinished business. I don't believe we have any unfinished business. Routine matters. Mr. Pettis, do you have any comments?
Yes, I have quite a few comments to share. The first one is that we, on Wednesday of this week, November thirtieth, from three to seven, at the Mission Parks and Recreation, we will be hosting the One-Stop Shop. This is what we have held before in assistance with utility and mortgage payments for citizens. We do have information on our website and also through our social media as well. Again, this is from three to seven, November thirtieth, Wednesday. We are hosting also an advisory board appreciation luncheon this Thursday, December first, eleven-thirty to one, at the Mission Event Center. This is for all advisory boards that we currently have in our city, and everyone is invited for that luncheon as well. On Thursday of this week, we had to reschedule from last week. We have the Christmas tree lighting Thursday, December first, at six p.m. and Friday, December second, at six p.m. Thursday, we will have the ceremony to start the Christmas tree lighting. At that point, have entertainment and fun and games for the children. And of course, the family, it's a free event for the community. Everyone's welcome to attend. We will have music entertainment on Thursday to include a new variety band as they're closing the night for that evening. Also, to let the mayor and the council know, on December the thirteenth, we will be having an employee service award breakfast. As we're at the Mission Event Center, we recognize our employees that have accomplished five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty-plus years. That is a breakfast December thirteenth at eight a.m. Also, we are starting a new initiative to invite the residents of our community. It's a merry and bright light mission. We are encouraging residents to register. Basically, this would be a, we will be going through our city and judging individuals that want to participate in decorating their homes with Christmas lights. This is a, again, a free to register. We are, we will provide a sign that recognizes the winners. We'll be recognizing five to six residents' homes throughout the city, and then also providing pointcetas and also coffee gift cards that were donated to the city for them to, on participating. Also, we will have a Pictures with Santa at the Mission Police Department, December the seventeenth, at eleven a.m. at the Mission Police Department. Again, free for the community. Anyone that wants to participate, Pictures with Santa at that time. And then also, at the Mission Police Department, we will be hosting the Cops for Kids, December twenty-first, at two p.m. Again, that's the annual toy drive that we host here with the Mission Police Department. Again, that's December twenty-fifth, and that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next item is... I don't have any comments today, just I'm glad everybody's back. Glad everybody had a safe Thanksgiving holiday. I didn't hear of anything major happening, right, Chief? We had a, yeah, uneventful, great, that's always good. No news is good news. So thank you very much. Y'all's, next, Ms. Jessica, do you have any comments?
Just wishing everybody happy holidays.
Thank you.
No comments.
Alrighty. The next item is our executive session. Government Code Section five-five-one point zero-zero-one, under Personnel Matters. Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, and we'll be right back. Motion carries unanimously and we'll be right back.
We shall.
Motion and a second to reconvene, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously and as far as the executive session is concerned, there will be no action on this side. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Alrighty, thank you, have a good evening.